Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, May 3 regular City Council meeting of the city of Bel Air Beach. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, a sad announcement to make. This weekend, a very good friend of mine and our neighbor, long-term resident of Bel Air Beach, passed away. His name's Ron Masara. And if you were here last year, you saw his girls do the -- they performed at the festival that came here, and they weren't the first people to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Done very suddenly, and it was real tragic. So I'm going to ask that we rise and observe a moment of silence for Ron and for his family and for his children, and keep them in your prayers if you're a praying kind of person, because I know the family would appreciate that. Then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. As a citizen charterer, to the public, which is asking, on an issue under God, in this council, the degree of justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the law.
Councilmember Robinaki?
Here.
Councilmember Frank Banker?
Right.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Natero?
Here.
Councilmember Reuswo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gabbas?
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo?
Here.
City Manager Len Reeves?
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley?
Here.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. First item of business is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion by Frank Banker.
Say it.
By Dave Gabbas. Any changes?
One.
Yes, Glenn Gunn?
Yes, from the consent agenda, I'd like to pull item number nine.
Item number nine. I'd like to pull number 10 also. Just when I say pull, you want to move it to the regular agenda, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So nine and 10, with nine from you, 10 from me. Anyone else have any possible changes? We'll move first on the -- well, we'll need a motion. Now, Mr. Gunn, you want to make the motion?
Yes, my motion is to go ahead and approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of items, line item nine and 10 into the regular agenda.
Great, thank you. And a second? Second of Frank Banker. Any discussion? And we're going to do a vote. This is just for the amendment itself, to amend by removing items nine and 10. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're now moving item nine and 10. I'm going to take what's 12 right now. I'm going to make that 12C, and I'm going to make nine 12A, and 10, it's going to be 12B. Now, with that, the motion that Frank Banker had made initially on the approval of the agenda as amended. Anybody else have comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda's approved as amended. Next is item two, citizen comments. Everyone has a three-minute presentation on any topic that is not on the agenda. If it's an item that's on the agenda, we'll get to you later on, and I promise there will be time for everyone to speak on any agenda item. If you do speak, please come up here and please speak, just like I'm doing right now, about one inch away from the microphone. Everyone will be able to hear you. Please give your name and address and address the council. Would anyone like to address council tonight? John Hansick? And then Debbie Mall?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just as an administrative remark here, the city manager and his staff did some tweaking on the audio in here, and perhaps people in the back, if you have any problems hearing or if you have any problems?
Hearing, seeing thumbs up, so thumbs up on this side, too.
Give us a high sign.
Lot of thumbs up. Okay, so, okay, we got it. It sounds good. Okay. Nobody ever has a problem here, John Hansick. Go ahead, Mr. Hansick.
Old drill instructor.
It's on, there you go.
Old drill instructor. John Hansick, 22nd Street. I actually have a compliment, which I'll give second, and a complaint, which I'm going to give to you first. The complaint is contractors doing all of this utility work on Gulf Boulevard are using the vacant lot at the corner of Gulf and 22nd as a parking lot and a dump. And I say dump because the gentleman who owns the property and is in the process of getting his plans approved for construction comes around about every seven to 10 days to cut grass, trim palm trees before he can actually cut that lot. The last two times, he's had to pick up cones, traffic cones, and more importantly, empty water bottles and trash. Now, the compliment is to HX Plumbing, or excuse me, paving. They completed paving 22nd until they're out of state, and I would observe periodically them doing their job again. Drivers in the dump trucks, level of supposed speed limit. The workers maintaining the equipment and doing the raking, hydrating, it picked up after themselves. I'd like them to be told that that was appreciated, and I'd like something to be done about all these contractors. The one in particular I see using quite frequently is that contractor writes, if contractor pickup trucks, they go in there to get the des, they're placed to do their thing. And I know I caught an earful this past weekend for my soon-to-be neighbor whenever he gets his plans approved. So it is private property. It's not public property. So something to be said to that contractor working in the subs, and we most appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hansick. Mr. Reeves, I'm going to refer this to you if you'll please, if you care to speak about it later during your time, you can. If not, I'd like you to address it directly with Mr. Hansick and the property lot owner. He's correct, this is private property. All right, thank you. Debbie Mall?
Hi, I'm Debbie Mall. I live at 115 Coastal Boulevard, and I just wanted to present two things I'd like you consider. First, it's my understanding that we allow Bel Air Shore to share our contract with Pinellas County Sheriff's. For our upcoming budget discussion this summer, I'd like you to consider having Bel Air Shore contract on their own with the Sheriff's. These are my concerns. First, we pay -- first, Bel Air Shore pays about 7% of what we pay for our contract. They pay $35,088 a year, I believe, according to their minutes, and we pay $53,888, according to our budget by fully. Last month, Bel Air Shore had 154 events, as reported at their meeting by the Sheriff's Department, and we had 717. That means we paid $58.55 per event, while Bel Air Shore gave $18.98 per event. Bel Air Shore had about 17.68% of the calls, but only paid 7% of the total sheriff's budget. I believe that I grabbed in their minutes, in Bel Air Shore's minutes, that they gave a 45 minutes of sheriff's time. And I can't remember if it was per shift or per day, so I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt and send per shift in my calculations. And they also stated in their minutes that this was not even enough time to do all the house checks that they have scheduled. So not only does this mean that the citizens' tax dollars in Bel Air Beach are subsidizing Bel Air Shore's sheriff's control, but that we, the citizens of Bel Air Beach, are actually paying the sheriffs to harass several citizens who put up umbrellas on our own gated accesses as well as for Florida's public land. I think if our citizens were aware of this, they would not be very happy about it. So I'm asking you all, including our attorney, to look into the legality of this issue and to reconsider this for our next year's budget. In addition, I note that Bel Air Shore is hosting the leasing meeting on July 28 at Our Little City Hall. I'm assuming that we're charging Bel Air Shore for the rental of our community center for this meeting. Since in the past, we have denied our own local Girl Scout troop from using our community center without charge, I think we have significant issues if we allow Bel Air Shore to use our community center for free. So I really would like to see that those contracts aren't dropped until we use our city hall. In the past, until maybe five, eight years ago, we had a good relationship with Bel Air Shore, but we, people have moved in and they've changed. We maintain and upgraded the access and parking lots, which I don't disagree with doing, except that they allow Bel Air Shore -- Bel Air Shore allows significant numbers of construction vehicles to drive over the gate rails and park in the lots and list this firsthand. That creates additional wear and tear on the rails and the parking lot that we have to pay for. We drive their homeowners' private beach property. We do that. Heck, even our city manager had to get homeowners' approval for the Gulf beautification project from their own citizens. Now, I know that we got Pinellas County money for that, but they did as well. So I would just like, if I still have interest for the community, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Jody Shirley?
Jody Shirley, 207 Harrison Avenue. I just want to thank you all for actually having directed some other words that we've spoken earlier about HX paving. Did a great job paving, paving versus paving. We had an incident today that I think photos were emailed to all of you all, that we had a concrete truck on Harrison Avenue that dug some pretty deep, you know, divots in the road. I would just say in the future, this is kind of why I've been preaching about impact competions and things such as that, really taking a look at our comp plan, I would say in the future that maybe we don't issue permits during the time we're paving, because especially if it's a concrete truck, we consider, you know, the time allowance for that asphalt to harden before we allow a concrete truck on the road. So just FYI, take a look at the email and some photographs, if you guys don't have time to run by there, but just something to consider for the future.
Excuse me, was that into the new paving that we've done?
Absolutely.
I'm going to refer this to Mr. Reeves and Mr. Riley for follow-up. They did damage to our property, I believe. You can pursue that. I don't know what the circumstances were, but it wasn't -- I'm hearing from Jody Shirley is it wasn't paved like that, so.
Oh.
Okay. Any other citizens? Seen no other hands. I'm going to close citizen comments. Sheriff, are you here to present?
I am here.
We have Pinellas County Sheriff's officers. Sheriff?
Good evening. Sergeant Switfield, Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. For the month of March 2021, for the UCR property in person crime reporting, there was a total of two incidents that were labeled as assault. I didn't look those incidents up. One was a domestic battery, and the other one was just a run-of-the-mill battery where a victim didn't want prosecution. For March 2021, there were a total of three people arrested. Again, one was for the domestic battery, one was for a warrant, and one was for the law. For that month also, there were 713 total events, and leading that was traffic enforcement in which 165 traffic stops were conducted. And then in those 165 traffic stops, a total, well, they must have been traffic stops and parking violations, and 148 citations and warnings were issued. And for citations issued, a total of 10 citations were issued, and the other were parking violations. And then there were some loading stops along the intercoastal roadway also. And then there were two crashes that were investigated in the city. And I don't know.
Sheriff, once again, a fine job by the department here. One of those incidents, sounds like domestic violence, which there's not much you can do other than react to it, which you did, it looks like. This is excellent. You know, I'm looking through the year. The year to date, we have six incidents in Our Little City. I mean, there's people have six incidents in an hour, so we've got six in a year, a year to date. That's fantastic. So congratulations to everyone in the department, and keep up the great work.
And as always, Mayor, that's the long tail of the ships.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Yes, on Gunn?
Yes, we just heard from Ms. Mall about that, and the relationship is your officers basically manage the Bel Air Shore stuff during the same shift, correctly? Right? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So why can't we look at Bel Air Shore's stats compared to ours, and we can track those months and kind of get a big picture overview of what's going on between Bel Air Beach and Bel Air Shore? And maybe we can connect the dots with some of the things that Ms. Mall's bringing on. So my recommendation is, in the future, that we get to see the Bel Air Shore stats at the same time. Is that possible?
I would have to look and see when the reporting is sent to us.
Sure.
When we come out and present at the city meetings, but I hope to see that it's not possible. I'll pass that along to Captain Liner to see if there's something.
I mean, it just makes sense that it's our guy, kind of works in both areas, so why not wire the two together so we get the big picture of this thing?
Councilman Gunn, I agree with you. I've actually made that request several months ago, and I know we made it to the sheriff, and I've never seen it. I said, let's see what's happening over there. From an enforcement point of view, you know, we see what's happening sometimes with, you know, enforcement here, but we don't know what's happening over there. And I think some of the residents are, you know, of the impression that, you know, either there's too much enforcement, not enough enforcement, you know, we'd like to see what's going on. I mean, it seems to be, at least these reports, the general reports seem like they're a public record, presenting them. I know you're presenting them in Bel Air Shore, so, you know, we could go and get the minutes, but the minutes typically come out a month or so later. So if you could forward them to us to what the councilman, you know, said, that's a great thing. I know that I made that request before, also, so we'll double that request, how's that?
You have to read it some, I think you're all forward the email.
Excellent. Thank you. And I think that'll help the citizens still here see what's going on. Other council members? Dave?
Thank you for your service. I think what may help us, you also, is if we just go ahead and do a records request just on the Bel Air Shore for, say, the last year, and we've got some media stats, and we can look at maybe either renegotiating based upon the number of calls or something like that, or, you know, split it. Whatever works best to both parties' advantage.
Anyone else on council? Anyone in from the city have any questions for the sheriff? Sheriff, thank you very much again, and if you can get back to Ms. Reeves, let us know what the result will be on that. If not, we can do it via records request, I'm sure.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move to the consent agenda as amended, so it's going to be items four through eight, and then item 11. I'm going to read them once, and then we're going to approve them. We'll open up for approval. So I'm asked for a motion to bring the consent agenda as a group. So it's item four, the approval of the April 5, 2021, City Council meeting minutes; item five, approval of the April 14, 2021, City Attorney Riley presentation minutes; item six, approval of April 26, 2021, special City Council minutes; item seven, approval of April 26, 2021, City Council work session minutes; item eight, proclamation 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week; and item 11, City Council acceptance of the Pinellas County 2020 Local Mitigation Strategy, LMS, annual progress report, and the Pinellas County Multi-Jurisdictional Community Rating System, CRS, annual report for program for public information, flood plain management plan, flood insurance improvement plan, and flood response plan. And that includes the Countywide Hazard Mitigation Plan, that provides public information and communication regarding flooding, savings and flood insurance purchased through the NFIP. Do I have a motion to approve all of that package?
So move.
Dave, yes, Leslie Natero, second. There's no discussion on this, we just pass it as a whole, so we're approving items four through eight, as I just read them, and item 11, as I just read it. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously?
I'm sorry. Nope.
You're good, okay. Seven, zero, passed unanimously, and that completes the consent agenda. We now move to the regular agenda. We had two items that were moved. First item was previously item nine, and that's what we're going to do first. It's now item 12A, and that is consideration of accepting the Planning and Zoning Board Code final, review final report, descriptions to accept the board's final report for future consideration and action. First, do I have a motion? Reuswo makes the motion. Second?
Second.
Second, Dave? Yes, discussion.
I'm going to go ahead and defer if I'm done.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes, the only reason I pulled this was because we, at the workshop, we went through the line items and the recommendations, and pretty much hit on all of those, and we came up with action items. The only thing that we didn't really come up with a plan of action for was the recommendation about citizen input to prioritize the code enforcement. And what I'd like to do is just make a recommendation. I can work with the city manager and his code enforcement, and this recommendation would kind of align with the city manager's intention later on in the budget process to bring up the reorganization of code enforcement and how that's going to work. But rather than try to spool up another committee on this sort of thing, I think we have the data to probably to make some smart decisions with that thing. And I plan on sitting down with the city manager and Laura in code enforcement and go through their records and their list. We get them up at the council meetings and just try to characterize what the major players are, and come back with some prioritizations for code enforcement, which kind of segues into some of the other discussion we had about code enforcement. There was some concern about focusing on the wrong thing, the net work thing. Well, what I want to mention is that code enforcement is an important thing for us because while we haven't gotten into real specifics of what a premier residential community looks like, we basically describe what a premier or what our thoughts about our community should look like in our codes. Our codes are the foundation, the basis for what our community thinks the place should look like. So I just want to, same way that codes are important, the ordinances support our strategic plan and the aesthetics of that, and while we may not specifically say this is exactly what our community should look like in our strategic plan, our codes basically describe what that is, and it's a foundation for how good neighbors work. And while we don't necessarily enforce codes all the time, it is a basis for when somebody thinks somebody's not living up to their obligations as a good neighbor, it gives us a fallback position to enforce that. So that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
The way I understand this, number nine here, is we're accepting the board's report, but we're not implementing that report. We just had about a two-hour session, as Councilmember Gunn just said. So this is, we've done this before. We accept it for final review. In fact, if anyone read the minutes of the work session, pretty much had most of the concerns that we kind of had consensus on. So each one of those actually represents an ordinance change that has to be changed separately. So there's going to be more debate on this, and I think that's also where your concern, you know, with the code actually comes in, and we certainly don't prioritize it. So we had very healthy discussion, I think, with that, and, you know, I think we'll probably have more. So I'm fine with it, you know, with that understanding. So anyone else on council?
I'd like to back up what Mr. Gunn said. Basically, there was a certain look and feel to Bel Air Beach that drew us off here. And I know that sometimes code makes us angry, and we want to try to change things and tear down for our own purposes, but at the end of the day, the more of it we remove, the less it becomes Bel Air Beach, it becomes some other town that we moved away from. So I'm hoping that everyone is understanding as we go through this, that not picking on anyone, we're just trying to make sure that we're that premier city that everyone loved whenever they first came here. That's all I've got to say.
Anyone on council? Citizens, any comments? In fact, council will ask for it to re-dispute.
I'm going to call for it.
Okay. So now, as item been revised, item 12A, and it's consideration of accepting the Planning and Zoning Board Code final, uh, final report, review final report. Yes, vote will accept the code's final report for future consideration and action. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Pass the seven to zero. We now take what was item 10, and it's now 12B, and that's consideration of approval of the local option fuel tax in our local agreement.
Excuse me? Yes. Number eight?
No, eight was part of the consent agenda. It's not, because it's consent agenda. Look, it will be discussed, I have a feeling, when we get to Patty's part of the show. I'll say something. In fact, we actually have a little honorary coming for the city clerks at our mayor's council, so, yeah, we're going to get that later. And that's, just so everybody knows, that's the honoring the municipal clerks week, and so that's what we're going to be doing here. We've just made a proclamation, which is in the packet, but later on, when we get to Patty's section, we'll have some stuff, I think, probably to say to you. At least I will. Okay, so we're on item 10 now. This is consideration of approval of the local option fuel tax in our local agreement. First, a motion.
So move.
Dave Gabbas? Second? Second by Robinaki. Dave?
I actually read through this, and even though it's a 5 cent, the potential for a 5 cent tax, I saw opportunity for our town, not so much with the funds, but as a way that maybe we should go to Fort Pinellas and sort of lobby to raise our concerns about what's going on with our traffic, how it's not only affecting us, but it's also affecting Bel Air Shore and also Bel Air Bluff more than anyone else. It's these three communities. We're in a sort of unique position compared to all the other towns in Pinellas County. Most of these, most of these cities have direct access to have, I would call them premium vacation spots, and that would be Clearwater Beach and St. Pete Beach. No one is required to go through another town to get to these cities. They can ride off the interstate or ride on Highway 60. We are a little bit different because as soon as traffic backs up, Google says go that way, go through Bel Air Beach, it's faster. And what I've noticed is whenever Gulf Boulevard stops, Google says, go down 19 and up Bayshore, make a left, and then you'll be ahead of five cars that you were behind five minutes ago. I hate that this is happening, and really, I believe that the only real fix would be a bridge going over to Sand Key, basically, from Clearwater over to Sand Key. Even if someone said, let's do this, let's get started tomorrow, we're talking 10 to 20 years before anything like that would ever happen. So basically, what I recommend is that, even though it's too late now, we should get the three communities together in a joint effort approach toward Pinellas and say, we think we should get a little bit more than what you're giving us, and instead of taking it from everyone, you should take it from Clearwater, because at the end of the day, they're the clear waters in this whole situation. Tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to vote yes on this because basically, if it doesn't go through, which it's a little too late now to get started on this, then there's no chance for an increase at all. We get .09%, is that right?
Yes.
You know, at this point, I'll take it. I think it's worth it. Even though gas costs more now, I just see all the people coming in, and I see a potential for more revenue for this city. So I think in the next year, I'm going to work with everyone here and the other two neighboring cities and see if we can do something about this, and maybe have the rates readjusted.
Thank you. The reason why I had asked to move this into this regular agenda instead of consent agenda is the rate itself. I think it's pathetic. Point oh nine percent. That means we're getting less than a penny out of every dollar that's collected on this tax. We're paying 5 cents a gallon, but we're getting We're paying five cents a gallon, but we're getting basically nothing back. To give you an idea, kind of dovetails a little bit with what Vice Mayor said. Clearwater gets 6.69 percent. St. Petersburg gets 15.3 percent. Pinellas Park gets 3 percent. And of course, this is the county's tax, so they get 60 percent. I mean, we're doing the heavy lifting. We're taking the heavy traffic, and we're getting nothing. So I'm not going to vote for this tonight, and the only reason also that I'm not going to vote for it is I don't even see how the methodology was calculated. There's nothing in this paperwork here that shows how they came up with these numbers. There's no computation. There's nothing that I can check back to see that they did their due diligence, and they're asking us to sign off on what, you know, promises to be an interlocal agreement without giving us any real support for how they came up with their numbers and any proof. So not quite sure. Lynn, it looks like you want to say so.
Mayor, how the percentages were calculated is by population, and I verified that again today. And it's, the 60 percent goes to the county, the 40 percent is divided among the rest of the cities in the county, and that's divided based on population.
We haven't checked that to make sure that their calculations are correct, right? And we don't know if it's the population pre-sensus or post-sensus, right?
No, I don't know the exact number. I can't tell you that, but this is an interlocal agreement. You know, it's typically run in 10-year cycles, and we get the local option gas tax, everyone, and it's, all the cities are sharing that.
Yeah, but some are sharing a little more than others. That's.
Well, based on the population, from what the county's talking.
But I'm going to side with, well, you know, I've been on traffic for a while here, and it's not getting any better. There's no solutions. You and I have met multiple times with county people. They've given us a couple of things, but it's not making that big of a difference, really, nothing that I can see. And, you know, a bridge, sure, I mean, it'll take 15 years, but you might want to start it now because I can't even imagine. You know, one of the things, last year before COVID hit, in the mayor's council, they were talking about the visit Clearwater-St. Pete group was so happy that they had gotten the word out to everyone in the country, and they were showing us billboards in Boston and New York City and stuff. And they said, well, now that we've done that, and of course, this was right before COVID, they said, now we're going to focus on getting the people within the state to start coming here. So that's where they're going with this. They want more daytrippers coming over from, you know, the mainland and from the inner portions of Florida. So I think whatever we have now may not be looking back at these being the good old days if they get their wish. So just something to think about. So I personally would like to see some more information. That's my feeling. And a couple of council members, right?
Yeah. The big problem I have with this, these pay-pitching fuel taxes I've experienced for over 40 years, they seem to want to go to the right place, but they never end up knowing. The other thing is, we have a federal government right now that's really pushing electric cars, electric vehicles. They're not going to pay us salaries. And I've asked numerous states' senators, legislators, that came from the construction world, most of the money for highway usage comes from the gas taxes, all right? These electric cars, partial electric cars, we're not getting any revenue from. They still tear up the roads. They still tear up the bridges. What are we going to do to replace that lost revenue? Mine gets its way. My new trucks want to be a relic. I mean, why are you going to be on the dead gas? All right? This could be a tax of nothing, all right? How much is it really going to save us, and how much is it really going to cost us? I agree with the council. We need a bridge in Sand Key, but I won't live to see it. And I'm not ill. It just won't happen, my lifetime. So I'm dead against this type of pitch. You come from the state of New Jersey, right?
Yeah.
Lowest gas lien pass for years. Senator Swinney put in a 25 cents. You went, no.
And I was just driving the roads of New Jersey, and I mentioned to June, I said, roads are as bad as they've ever been, but their taxes are higher than they've ever been. So you're right, right? You're right. Can I ask, can I, Britta's vote?
Yes, my question is to the city manager. So if we don't pass this, we get nothing, right? Is that how it works at this point? Because there's no negotiating. I don't feel like at this point in the process, it's too late. So if we don't vote for this, we just absolutely get nothing?
Well, we currently haven't had a local agreement on the existing. All this is doing is giving the county, the county is telling us, we will share in the five cent if they implement it. If they don't implement it, which is, they've got till October to implement it, but what the county administrator asks us is to get the interlocal agreement approved. So if it is implemented, then at least going forward, we're going to get part of it. But at the current time, I don't know if not doing this, because we are still under the other one. This is just a.
And I, I'm sorry, can I add something right quick? I think that it doesn't require 100% approval. I think that it's a majority. I don't know what that number is, but I believe that's what I read, is that some people may not sign it, and either way, they'll still get it if it's approved.
That was actually going to be my next question, so thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mike Gunn.
Personal political opinions aside, I think that the day of reckoning for electric vehicles are coming. I mean, that subject is getting a lot of visibility now, exactly what you're saying. But political, personal political opinions aside, I ask what's best for the city of Bel Air Beach. And if that provides $1 more than what we have in our budget now, then I am all for supporting this thing. We can go back and try to negotiate a higher rate, but why, why would we turn down money coming to the city of Bel Air Beach? That makes no sense whatsoever. If it's $1 more than what we had yesterday, I am all for it, and we need to get smart about this. Fees are the way to go, and as is shown in the presentation from Pinellas County, one-third of that money comes from non-residents. So, I mean, these are all, these are all the people coming down on spring break or on vacation or the snowbirds or whatever. They're not necessarily homestead residents, but they're bringing money in, and we should take advantage of it. But to just cut off our noses, spite our face makes no monetary sense whatsoever. Thank you.
Someone correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I read it is we're going to get that tax whether we approve it or not. I think this, I think this whole.
If the county approves it, yes.
Yeah, I think this whole thing should go back to county committee and have a retool. I think it's unfair that we take the burden of the traffic. Electric vehicles, I'm not getting political, but it's a fact of life. They're here, and they're here to stay. I just don't think we should jump on this and say bravo to the county for passing it, and we get smidgen from it.
The, I'll go and then you go, yeah. So you don't negotiate contracts after you sign it. You negotiate before you sign it, and this is before we've signed it. We don't have to sign this today. The county hasn't passed this. It's not even on their agenda right now. They have until October. It's incumbent on us, there's been at least two, possibly three, that we will raise a question as to what happens if we don't do it. We didn't get a good answer to that. So go back to the county and find out. They have a county commissioners meeting every single month, and be it a representative from our council or our city manager goes there, our legal representative writes a letter to them, and we swear this away. This is negotiable right now. Maybe. We can ask. The worst they could say is no. I'm not, this is, to sign this, it's what's known as a contract of adhesion. Sign or else. We're not in that position right now. Sure, I'll take the money, but you said something, Councilmember Gunn, that one-third is paid by the outside people. Means two-thirds paid by the inside people. That's me. That's the people that I'm looking at out here. And if you're going to pay two-thirds of this tax, I want you to get more than a penny.
It's not a tax.
One second, don't interrupt. It is a tax. It's a tax, it's a fuel tax. So it's, if you're going to get more than one penny on every dollar that the county collects, I just think that's a pathetic return for us. And it's always the same cities that are benefiting on this, yet you're right, we get the wear and tear, and it destroys our quality of life. Some of these other cities aren't experiencing that same problem. They guess.
One of the reasons why there's dates matter, yes, they have to have it completely, they have to complete it by October. However, I think that there's a flow of processes that must occur, and they're looking for a June 1 deadline on everyone. Is that right, Lynn?
Yes. Dave. County asked all the city managers to take this to our council and get it back to us by May 25th, and that's what we're talking. And that was from the county administrator.
And they said, basically, the state of Florida would not allow it if it goes beyond a certain date. Also, I'd like to address the electric vehicle. It's capitalism. Basically, what's going to happen is eventually these convenience stores are not going to be able to sell fuel. What's going to happen? They're going to install electric fuel pumps. So if you think they're just going to give it away, it's not going to happen. It's going to be another form of fuel, and we will be taxed on that also. So yeah, during the transition, you're going to have, just like we have right now, you're going to have gas, you're going to have electric, and have little by little, be more and more electric, but all of these convenience stores are going to have to step up. And whenever that happens, if any of us think that Pinellas County and the state of Florida are not going to cash in on that opportunity, you know, that's something maybe you should reconsider.
I agree with you, Vice Mayor, but I've dealt with the oil lobby for years, and I come from an area where natural gas floors, and you didn't see no natural gas pumps in the southern part of the state and like that. And now we're just really restricted to natural gas pipelines, okay? A lot of these electric cars go in there and charge for free right now. There's one in Indian Springs Beach, or there's a couple in Indian Springs Beaches, and they're always having. And I agree, one day, someone's going to say, we have to put a tax on it. That tax isn't today. I really believe the county is trying to get all the communities to approve this, to say, oh, everybody wants to do this, so let's move it. This needs to be retooled.
Any other council members? Let's open this up to the citizens. Citizens, any comments? City, no comments, I'm going to bring it back to council for final word. Okay, then I'm going to, I'm going to do this by, I'm not going to do this by voice vote. I want the votes recorded on this one. So item 10, which has now been revised, item 12B, is consideration of approval of the local option fuel tax interlocal agreement. And the description is approval of the agreement between Pinellas County and Pinellas County municipalities for the administration and expenditure of the proceeds. Yes, vote will approve that and bring it to county. Madam Clerk, please call overall.
Councilmember Reedus vote?
Yes. Aye.
Councilmember Leslie Natero?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frank Baker?
No.
Councilmember Robinaki?
No.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Joseph Manton?
No.
So passes four to three. Mr. Reeves, you go forward with the county, and please let them know that it's not in tonight, yes. Okay. Okay, back to our regular agenda, item C. It's 12, bust 12, now it's item 12C. This is, was an item that was referred from last month, and I see some of the individuals are back. Consideration of appointments to the citizen advisory committee. The city council's going to vote by ballot to appoint up to five members to that council. We have five, one, two, three, we have six people up for consideration. Ron Zaganek, Mark Goldman, John Hanzig, John J. Hayes, Robert Reisberg, and Jody Shirley. First, I just need a motion to, for consideration of this group of individuals. Do I have that?
So.
Dave Gaddis, second? Robinaki. Comments before I open it to the floor?
I would just like to thank everyone for signing up, nominating themselves.
With that said, obviously, our thanks for coming out to do this and coming out at you for the second time. What we typically will do is allow anyone who wishes to speak in their own support or in support of another person to come up. And of course, you can say something against a person, too, just let's keep it polite here. If we could, keep it factual based. So with that said, I see some individuals in the audience. Would anyone like to address council? Marv, I don't think you're on this one. I have you on the next one.
I don't.
Mark Goldman, I think, right?
Thanks.
Mark is on this? Wait, hang on. Hang on one second. Mark Bean is on number 13. I don't see him on number 12C.
No, I'm not out of the way to one of the car.
Okay, that's fine. So we have, I have Mark Goldman, then we'll go with you, okay? Go ahead.
VP. Counsel? Mayor, residents that chose to attend this evening. I'm Mark Goldman. I'm a resident for almost 21 years now, and spent about two years on the underground committee, trying to get that project completed, and happy to announce that it was completed and quite satisfactorily. If anybody doubts what the finished product looked like, take a ride down any of the streets on W Island Estates, and you'll see what can happen in your part of the city as well. We did during that timeframe, set up a framework where any other streets or groups of streets in the city take advantage of the same processes that we use. So I urge you to get with your folks, and if you like what you see, then we'll help you get there as well. My interest in wanting to be on the committee is because I think that we need more citizen input into what's going on in the city, and this is a great forum for us to get into ground roots, see the things that are coming about in the future. So I'm offering to do my time there. One more thing I just wanted to say is that the success of the Bel Air Island Estates underground project is very, very much because of the amazing effort from Lynn Reeves. His negotiation skill, his work with contractors and the project managers was just outstanding, and he told us what he could do, and he delivered, and he got it done for under budget, and I know that those people who are getting refunds are very happy about that. So thank you for the city for allowing the work that Lynn did, and look forward to being on the committee in future.
Thank you. Mark Bean.
Mark Bean, which I, I think what you should do as a council is actually have all six people on it, and there are times that you might find one person not being able to make it the other person. But since six, I had, I said, okay, I want to do this for the city, I think you should go ahead.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see no other hands. Council, any, yes, I'm on my outside right now. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to bring it back to council, like I.
Yes, sir. Based on that statement, I would like to propose an amendment to this where we choose five primary members and one alternate. And the reason behind that is to have five, a hot number, who can conduct business, and yet these are very busy people, they have other careers, and they are volunteering their time to assist us, and they bring a lot of skill sets to us and a lot of activity, business activity, and we need to take advantage of all of them. Somebody's out of pocket, traveling, or called away by other duties or business or whatever, we have the alternate who can also slip in and help conduct business. So that's my amendment, my proposed amendment, five primaries, one alternate.
I don't know that I can accept your amendment right now. I'll tell you why. This was, the formation of the committee was passed, as I recall, last time, and that was passed via ordinance or resolution. I don't remember whether we, but we passed it either way, whether it's ordinance or resolution.
I think it's an ordinance.
Okay, I think it was, and I think we have to change it via that. That would be an improper change. So we can do that, and there's nothing that says we can't use, you know, a person doesn't, you need four votes to get on this committee, but we, there's nothing saying that we cannot amend that. But we, there's nothing saying that we cannot amend that, that we have to amend it the proper way for an ordinance. I don't think we can just add it. So it's a great suggestion, and I don't think I want to lose the people either. But, you know, let's do it the right way here, with the ordinance amendment.
Agreed.
Yep, correct. Lynn's giving me a thumbs up. Fred Riley, yes, okay. All right, other council comments?
Can you use the table when you said?
No, I don't think so. I think we can move, everybody wants to move, I'll just take the consensus, everybody wants to move forward with getting individuals on. And if, you need, in order for this to happen, our, so you have to have four votes. So it is, you're going to vote for up to five members. You can vote for zero, one, two, one way up to five. If anybody gets four votes is on. Anyone else is, can come back, and we can amend this. But we're going to need two meetings before we can amend that ordinance. So it might be a little bit of, you know, it might be two months before we do it. But I don't think that's a bad idea. Actually, we kind of missed that one. We probably should have had alternates in there. But we got the committee, so we'll amend it. Patty, do you have ballots to pass out? Or do you want the ones, the ones that we have in here, in our books?
There are in our seat, but there's a, there's one in your seat.
There's one in our seat? Upside down. There it is. Okay, council, we're going to take it to vote at this point. When you're ready, we'll hand it to Patty. Vote for up to five, okay?
Thank you.
Lynn Reeves, will you co-tally this with me? I'm going to try and do it, if you'll do it too, make sure our numbers match, okay? Patty, if you could just go through relatively slowly, because Lynn and I are both recording this. And if you take it in the order that the names are on the sheet here, that would be great. But it doesn't really matter, but if you go slow enough, we'll get them all.
Councilmember Ockie voted for Mr. Sagannic, Mr. Hansick, Mr. Reisberg, and Ms. Shirley. Councilmember Baker voted for Mr. Sagannic, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Hansick, Mr. Reisberg, and Ms. Shirley. Vice Mayor Dallas voting for Mr. Sagannic, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Hansick, Mr. Reisberg, and Ms. Shirley. Councilmember Dunn voted for Mr. Sagannic, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Reisberg, and Ms. Shirley. Councilmember Natero voted for Mr. Sagannic, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Hansick, Mr. Hayes, and Ms. Shirley. Mayor Mantle voted for Mr. Hansick, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. Reisberg.
Okay, so what I have, I'm going to just go down by the totals here. And Lynn, I'm sorry?
I have one more.
Oh, we have one more? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Swope voted for Mr. Sagannic, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Reisberg, and Ms. Shirley.
Okay, that concludes the voting, right?
Yes.
All right, so I have five, six votes for Ron Sagannic. You're on the committee, congratulations. We have one, two, three, five votes for Mr. Goldman, correct, Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
You're on the committee, congratulations. I have five votes for John Hansick, you're on the committee, congratulations. I have four votes for John Hayes, he's on the committee, congratulations.
No, you, Mayor?
No?
No.
I have Natero, Gunn, Swope, and...
No, the next two you have more votes for.
Okay, I'm, all right, all right. Six votes for Mr. Ron, Ron Reis, Robert Reisberg, correct?
Correct.
And six votes for Jody Shirley. So Ron Sagannic, Mark Goldman, John Hansick, Robert Reisberg, and Jody Shirley comprise the committee with, if we can do this alternative, I mean, we're going to still have to do another vote, but the alternate person would be John Hayes. Okay, everyone, thank you. Congratulations. Okay, item 13, consideration of appointment of Mark Bean to the Board of Adjustment. This is council's consideration for appointment of a board member. This is an active seat, right? This is not an alternate position, correct? I believe that is right, yes, okay. You have a motion? Lesley Natero, second?
Second.
Uh, I'm going, Dave Gaddis. Uh, any council comments?
I think that Mark would be a great board member. Whenever I first moved here, came over and gave the advice. Was at my own property, and he was very knowledgeable. And I look forward to seeing him do the work.
Counsel. Mr. Bean, would you like to speak on your own behalf?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure? I have, I have the boss here on the planning of the Board of Adjustment. Mr. Kelly?
Mike Kelly, Piscatawag. Mark has already served on Board of Adjustment with us prior to becoming a council member. So I strongly endorse his return and hope as an active member, steps right in with training already done, just like Dave just said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Any other citizens? Back to council, I have a question for you, Mr. Bean. Why? I understand. Two months he was retired, I said to stay retired. I think you have our endorsement, so. Anyone else in council? I'm going to do this with the voice vote. This is to put Mark Bean on the Board of Adjustment. Yes, vote puts him on. All in favor? Aye, aye. Anyone opposed? Nay. Nay, we have one nay, so six to one. Reedus Swope is the name. Six to one, Mark Bean, you're on. Congratulations. Mike, are you full now? Just give me a thumbs up. He's giving me a thumbs up, so the Board of Adjustment is full then.
Mayor, there's still missing two alternates, Patty?
Alternates, right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have another alternate application next month.
Excellent. Okay. Right now, okay. Item 14, consideration of appointment of Park and Recreation Board alternate member Nora Kodak, board member. This is council's consideration of appointment of a board member. She wasn't alternate, so it's moving her onto the regular board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Aron, and second? Second, Dave Gaddis. Uh, council comments? Is Ms. Kodak here? Would you like to speak? Come on up.
I'm Nora, I live in St. Patrick's Street. I moved here with my husband and his two children about a year ago. However, my mother's worked here for four years, so this is always a kind of a second office for me. I'm really excited to officially be a part of the community, and really excited to be on the board. So it's going to be a lot of fun and exciting, and so I think that's a great time and consideration.
Welcome, full time, and thank you for working on the, on the board so far. Hopefully we'll get you on the full board here in a couple minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Back to council. Let's bring it up for a vote. So this is for consideration of appointment of Park and Recreation Board alternate member Nora Kodak, who we just heard from, to a full board member. A yes vote accomplishes that. I'm going to take a voice vote. All in favor? Aye, aye. Would you want to post? Seven to zero, congratulations, Ms. Kodak, you're on full time. Okay, next is item 15. This is consideration of resolution 2001-04. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, establishing an audit committee, providing for membership of the audit committee, providing for the selection of a chair, providing for duties and responsibilities thereof, providing for meetings, and providing for an effective date. This is consideration to establish a committee for review of city annual financials, internal controls, and compliance of policies and procedures. We deferred this from last time. First motion?
So moved.
Gaddis, second? Leslie Natero's raising her hand. Dave?
I think it's something needed. We've discussed this in the past, and I will, will let you go.
I have a procedural question, and I'm sorry I can't reach out to you earlier, Mr. Riley. I hate to blindside you, so if you need an adjournment, I know, I just already do this, but there's no other way, unfortunately, with the rules we have in play right. So the audit committee is specified under state statutes, under Florida 218-391. And it calls for it to be an audit committee. What is being proposed here is to basically take the citizens advisory committee that we just appointed and add one council member to it, and make that the audit committee. Now, historically, we have had, I would say a prohibition, but we discourage people from serving on two boards. In fact, if you're on Board of Adjustment and you're on the planning board, you're actually prohibited from serving on two boards. It's not clear with regard to the Parks and Rec Board and some of the other boards, but it's what we typically follow. So what I'm throwing to you is, I just want to make sure, because the penalty, if we don't do this right, is an invalidation, not that we're going to challenge it, but perhaps a losing water might challenge it. So the process has to be proper. So what I'm asking you is, based on the proposal that's here, which is to utilize the citizens advisory committee plus one council member, is that going to work in terms of statute 218-391?
Yes.
That's all I need to know.
But I'll give you a better answer than that.
That's a great answer.
I reviewed the statute, and the principal requirement is you need one person from the governing body, which would be one of the seven of you. And the, I also reviewed the code provisions related to the citizens advisory committee. There's no prohibition like in one or two of the other committees. So since it's not prohibited, it's permissible. And it comes down to a discussion among the city council members in implementing this, if this is advisable from your perspective or not.
Is this considered an ad hoc committee under the terms of our charter?
I would say it is.
So under an ad hoc committee, the presiding...
Well, this is a committee that's based on a statute. So I would say that this, the statute requires a minimum of three people, and one of the three has to be a elected official. So that, that's really the, the ground rules you have to comply with.
The only reason why I ask is in terms of appointment for a presiding officer of the committee and for appointment and recommendation of a council member. Is it an ad hoc committee, it's done one way, you have a presiding officer? If it's a regular committee, it's done via council?
The statute, I believe it's 218, or 391, two, references the elected official, and the elected official would be the, I believe, would be the chairman of the, this committee.
I think what we have in here, if I, because I remember reading it, is that...
No.
Hang on, Lynn, say whatever you just said to him.
No, what, the requirement, the elected official isn't the chairman. It's selected by the group, but there has to be an elected official on it. It's, it's been a change. Five years ago, when we went for an auditor, this wasn't in existence evidently, and this staffed it. Well, now, the statutes require that an elected official participate in this committee. Some cities have two or three members of, if they have a finance committee. And I think the simplest way is to choose the citizens advisory committee and select a council member to be part of that committee. Our audit, RFP, just FYI, is on the street right now. We need, the 19th is due back to us, so they'll have to review that charter after.
Any other council comments? Leslie?
I just wanted to clarify...
Leslie, it's in Mike, I can't even hear it.
I just wanted to clarify something. It says in here that the committee members elect the chair. The member of the council that's on the committee does not automatically become the chair of the committee. Is that correct?
That's what the, this says, yes.
I'm assuming that's it. It's correct under the statute?
The statute requires the elected official, and I may have misspoken.
Just to be on the committee, but the chairman of the committee doesn't have to be an elected official.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
When do we intend to appoint the council representative? Because that's not in here. Mr. Riley, is that an acceptable add? If I can get the council to, I mean, there's only seven of us here that are in the running, and we're all here tonight to speak on our own behalf. There's, can, if I can get an amendment to this, can we read that for tonight?
You can.
Okay. So do, so, would somebody like to amend this to have that we will appoint the council representative this evening? And number 15, folks, we can bring it back. Glenn Dunn is raising his hand.
I'll make a motion for an amendment to amend this, so that we go ahead and seek a council member, whether it's a volunteer or appointing or...
Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second on Dave Gaddis. Any conversation, discussion on the amendment? We're going to vote on the amendment that, the amendment is simply to leave number 15 intact the way it is, except that we will appoint the council member tonight, or get a volunteer tonight from the council to fully staff this committee. We have the resident, but this way we can move forward with the committee. So a yes vote will move this thing forward. Take this via voice vote. All in favor of the amendment only? Aye?
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so we're going to make the appointment tonight for council. Do we have any other discussion on the, on the, or questions regarding item 15 from the council? Citizens? Back to council, final word, Dave Gaddis?
Aye.
Okay, then I'm going to call it. So this is consideration of resolution, and then we'll, we'll do the appointment. If this passes, we'll do the appointment right afterward, and we'll, so we'll actually do both appointments, just to make it formal. Consideration of resolution 2021-04, resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, establishing an audit committee, providing for membership of the audit committee, providing for the selection of a chair, providing for duties and responsibilities thereof, providing for meetings, and providing for an effective date. A yes vote establishes this committee. All in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Passes.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor? Can I get a roll call on that?
Sure, of course. Okay, so that vote's invalid, we're going to go to roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Natero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Ockie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dabbis?
Aye.
Mayor Mantle?
Aye. So it's still passed, seven to zero, and so the, the committee has been established. Now to appoint everyone. So the, we've already said that the citizens advisory committee is going to make up these spots, so five members will be sitting on this. We now seek for anyone who wants to nominate themselves or someone else on the council. It's going to be council only. I'm going to nominate myself, folks. And I'm doing it simply because of my background. So I have, I'm a CPA, inactive. I've been so since 1982. Worked for Deloitte, and I've worked with auditors for many years in both my capacities, accounting manager at Sony Corporation America, which is in transit, and also privately as a CPA. And I was active until I went to law school and I became an attorney. But I still have an inactive license, so I'm actually a licensed CPA, I just don't practice anymore. And I can't practice officially. And I can't practice officially, but I can renew that license. So, I have quite a bit of experience in this, and I'd love to give it to the city to help you out on this one. Anyone else?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Leslie Natero.
Okay. Any other nominations? Will you, you want to call a vote? Is that the best way to do this? We need four.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can you nominate from out here?
I don't know. Can you nominate from out there? Nominations come from the council on an ad hoc, on a regular committee. I asked you if it was an ad hoc. Kind of like a draft. I'm sorry to hear you.
You just said, did an amendment where you, as a council, stated or amended the resolution so that you would name one of the seven of you to be the representative. So I would say the resolution, or the nomination needs to come from the council, not from the citizens of Florida.
I will open it up if anyone wants to speak for or against from the floor.
No, I was, I'm in line with that. Still looking it up to citizens' comments, maybe not for nomination.
Absolutely.
Some thoughts?
Jody Shirley, two oh seven Harrison Avenue. I just, I know that Glenn Gunn has had a lot of experience in the past on budgeting and assisting with strategic planning, and I'd love to see him as a member of the committee. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the citizens? Bring it back to council.
I'll nominate Glenn Gunn.
Glad you accepted the nomination.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we now have three individuals in the running for this. Anyone else? We need four votes. Madam Clerk, we have Leslie Natero, Glenn Gunn, and myself. The poll, please.
Councilmember Baker?
Glenn Gunn.
Councilmember Gunn?
Glenn Gunn.
Councilmember Natero?
Leslie Natero.
Councilmember Swope?
Uh, Councilmember Natero.
Councilmember Ockie?
Joe Manta.
Vice Mayor Daddis?
Glenn Gunn.
Mayor Manta?
Joseph Manta. We have three votes for Glenn Gunn, two votes for me, and two votes for Leslie Natero, so we do not have a winner. Anyone wish to withdraw? Then we do not have a winner. We need four votes.
I'll withdraw.
Glenn Gunn withdraws. Second vote. Leslie Natero and myself.
Councilmember Baker?
Leslie Natero.
Councilmember Gunn?
Leslie Natero.
Councilmember Natero?
Leslie Natero.
Councilmember Swope?
Leslie Natero.
Councilmember Ockie?
Joe Manta.
Vice Mayor Daddis?
Leslie Natero.
Mayor Manta?
Joseph Manta. So, votes five to two, Leslie Natero will be the council representative. This committee convenes immediately, Mr. Reeves, or like within a month?
Yes. Excuse me. As soon as we get the audit back, or audit, RFP back, we'll compile them and give them to the committee, 'cause that'll be their first.
When will we make the decision on council? When is that expected?
Well, they'll review the proposals, they'll make a recommendation to the, to the council, and after that's done, then they will shortlist, depending on the number of people, and then the shortlist will come to the city council to make the final decision.
Do you have an estimated date for that?
It's really gonna depend on how many, I'm hoping in, right now, I think the date I've got is, I'm hoping for the July first week meeting to do the presentations, just depending on how many we get, how fast that gets the committee together to...
And this fee will be integrated to our new audit, to our new budget, correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It's, well, it's not for the new budget, it's for the current year budget. They will audit.
No, I'm talking about their fee, because we have a new, now we have a...
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yes, 'cause that may change.
We're gonna know those proposals with the RFPs.
Okay, so as long as you're prepared. Okay, wonderful. Anybody else have any questions? Item sixteen. Recap of the Florida League of Cities twenty twenty-one Institute for Elected Municipal Officials. It's called EMO two. Councilmember Gunn requested this. This is a recap of key learning points, recommendations, and best practices. First, let's just have a motion.
Sub move.
Dave Gaddis? Second?
Second.
Glenn Gunn? Dave Gaddis, you wanna get the floor to Glenn Gunn? Yes, there you go. Glenn Gunn, you have the floor.
On April twenty-third through twenty-fourth, I attended the second training session for the Institute of Elected Municipal Officials. It was held over Daytona, and it's a gathering of maybe thirty, forty people from the different municipalities, and the Florida League of Cities brings in special speakers and that sort of thing. It serves as a great basis for networking with other municipalities and sharing experiences as well as best practices, that sort of thing. They had some very good speakers with a lot of municipal governing experience as city managers, as financial directors, in human behavior, that sort of thing. There were only four major topics that they discussed during this time. One was effective council techniques, group dynamics, decision-making models, media relations was a pretty good one. The second, second was on planning, growth, and management, basically, planning and zoning and comprehensive plans for the city. The, the third topic was advanced revenue and finances for cities, and it was interesting because the guest speaker and the leader of those discussions was a fellow by the name of Kimball Adams, who is actually the finance director for our neighboring sister city of Largo here, and he works on the board of directors with the Florida League of Cities and has a lot of experience as an adjunct professor with the Florida South, Florida South University, that sort of thing. And the, the last thing was building your city's team and personnel labor issues. Obviously, some of this stuff didn't apply necessarily to us, but it was a great opportunity and just a, a thing to bring up some, some thinking. I'll just hit on some of the topics. Vice Mayor also attended, and he may have a different perspective. By all means, chime in, Vice Mayor, if you think there's something I missed. One of the things we picked up on right away was, less than half the cities in Florida have term limits. It was interesting, because we just went through this with our charter review, and it was interesting because some of the cities that don't have term limits are working hard to get them, and then other cities that do have term limits are, are working hard to get minimums. So it was just kind of an interesting take on that, how things were going. Obviously, the, the, the two competing thoughts are, well, you know, you don't want to get stagnant, people in there, the same ideas all the time, you want to get fresh ideas and fresh blood in there, while at the same time, you may not have interest in, in the people or the community to come forward and, and take on the roles and responsibilities as an elected official. So that was just a good, good thing there. The, the use of workshops to build teams and work on improving the dynamics. The takeaway from that is, what we see and witness here in our own groups is, is nothing new. All the cities and municipalities go through the same thing. You get heated, passionate, outbursts, you have very heated discussions, some nights you walk away saying, boy, I wish I had said that, and there are other nights when you say, that was a good night, and we accomplished a lot. So it was interesting hearing all of these things. Interestingly, the big cities, the little cities, what you find is, they all have the same issues, the same problems, the only thing that changes are the, the names of the people involved and the dollar values of the, the issues or the projects. It was very interesting. Some of the best practices, I'll just hit on real quickly, managing the, the council agenda to be strategic, develop those things at the workshop, have the discussions, come up with a consensus and a plan, so that when you get to things like the regular council session, it's just one item after the other, you kind of know, and if there's, there's some extra bar or something like that, you can carry on and expedite business. One concept that's going on is, as you see the changing dynamics on journalism and social media and the interaction of news reporting, that sort of thing, cities are more and more becoming their own news source, and they're doing that with their websites, they're doing that with social media. So that's, that was just a best practice, I was taking away from that. So far as the comp plan, the comp plan establishes the public interest for us, and it was very interesting how closely that aligned with the strategic plan. The, the biggest thing there is the comp plan is more narrowly focused, however, the strategic plan basically sets the same, what's the division for the city, what are the goals, what are the objectives, how are we going to get there? So, the comp plan is supposed to be reviewed every seven years, and I believe we're probably coming up pretty close, and I think the existing comp plan was reviewed back in sixteen, it only goes as far as actually twenty, is that right?
It's, it's actually, the process has started already.
Let's see. A lot of talk about finance versus fees versus taxes and revenues. The, the takeaway there was that people are much more willing to line up for fees. They understand, hey, it's a very narrowly focused, I'm providing money in exchange for this service or this deliverable from the city. Taxes do need to be very nebulous, and people don't necessarily see the benefits of it. So, the, the takeaway, the best practice was to go ahead and review your fees on a very recurring basis, understand what you can get away, what you can take away, what you need to bolster, and on no less than an annual basis, you should be reviewing your If you pave a road when it looks like it needs it, then you waited too long. And that comes down to the strategic plan, the goals, the objectives, the capital improvement plan, it's a family of plans, and we need to really make sure that those things are well aligned. If your revenues are not increasing, then they're decreasing. It's, it's not focusing on revenues at the expense or the blind eye of expenditures, but you really need to understand your revenues, and if, if you are not increasing your city's revenues, then they are essentially declining. Yes, charge impact fees. We're, we're seeing that more and more. I mean, we do work, and then we have to turn right around and do it again, at the expense, and again, you know, understand what's the cost of doing business. We pave a road, we plan for it, we do it, and then right behind it, somebody comes in to renovate a home or something, and we absorb the cost of having to be paying that road. So, impact fees, I think that's something that we will probably pitch at our newly established advisory committee, and in the budget review, we'll probably have some good discussions on, on that sort of thing. Along with the fees, examine the options, you, you can stop doing something, you can reduce services, and the best practice is to reduce them incrementally, you can raise the current fees, you can implement new fees, and you can, or you can just do a combination of a little bit of all of those things. Improvement is a continuing process, and can everybody's own before that. Vice Mayor, are missing anything? Did anyone react?
No, I'll, I'll just echo what you said about term limits. Surprisingly, the Florida League of Cities is pro, I'm sorry, against term limits, and I think the reason why, what, what they were telling us is that the longer someone is, is in office, the more influence that they can have, and that they have better knowledge, and, and they just get to know people. So, I can't say that we made a mistake, but it was interesting to hear another point of view. Also, there were, there were some comments made about when and where council members should appear. I'll go into that later in a work session, but it's, it's one of those things that if I don't bring it up in the next work session, I would like someone to remind me, because based upon their opinion, you may not necessarily be doing everything exactly the right way. Is that a good way to say that? Other than that, I think you pretty much covered most of it, because the focus was really for food groups and...
I'll just close with two comments. One is, you know, the Florida League of Cities kind of sees that, I, I think we're off to a good start here with our new advisory committee, because what that, what that allows us to do is we continue to build continuity, we're bringing together a group of highly-powered individuals with a, with a lot of diversified business skill sets and thinking. We, we built a good brain trust, it's a good starting place. We, we lead the decision-making with the elected officials, but we come and go, and with term limits, that's gonna become possibly problematic, who knows? But, we will always have that advisory committee to provide the, the continuity and the brain trust for us, and be up to, up to speed on all the issues and how those things wire together and help cover that sort of thing. The last thought I have is that I highly recommend this training. The, the first phase is the IEO one, and that's a great foundation for, for elected officials. The Cities 101 gives you a great foundation for understanding budgets, what fees are, taxes are, capital improvement plans. You, you learn a language, it's really a leg up for learning the new language of municipal administration. And of course, all of these just keep, continue to build off one another, so for my fellow council members, highly recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions? Any citizens' questions? Okay, that'll conclude that. We'll move on to item seventeen, which is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? I have unfinished business. Talking about term limits. The citizens unanimously passed term limits back in November of twenty twenty. As of the last time I looked, it's still not enacted on our books and on the charter. So can I get a status of that, please?
Actually, Patty's gonna give you that tonight.
I'm asking for it now. Eddie?
We just received our letter from the Department of State, and acknowledging that they had filed our amended charters of wanting to receive this, now it's effective.
Now it's effective?
Yes.
So it's effective as of the date of that? What was the date of that letter?
Well, it's dated the twenty-second, but we didn't receive it until, I think it was the, it was postmarked the twenty-seventh. I, I think it was received on Thursday or Friday, I don't have the exact date.
So can we all agree that it's like thirty, or May first? May first is a Saturday, so, May, today?
Well, it's affected the date of the letter. We just didn't get the letter, so...
Okay, so it's effective. So starting with the next council session...
So starting with the next council session, then we will be operating under those rules. Now the other charter amendments from the last election to council election of March, those are pending, right? Correct?
Those have been sent to municipal codes and we're waiting for them to get that together and send us our proofs.
Excellent. That takes care of my unfinished business. Anyone else? Any citizens have anything that we missed? Okay, we'll go to city attorney, Brett Riley.
No report.
City manager, Lynn Reeves.
Just quick updates and probably some of you got into the city news, but 7th and 8th Street, that project's complete. We'll be moving on to 12th and 13th for the design. There are still some outstanding things that they've got to repair, but the project in total is complete and we'll be removing the dock. We're out for quotes for that because it's damaged. And then we'll reopen the boardwalk or the boat ramp.
The boat ramp's going to be open irrespective of the dock, right?
Right.
After you did demolition, of course.
Right. Yeah, we've got to close now because we don't want somebody to go out on that dock and hurt themselves. As you all know, the paving is done. We're having a walkthrough with the contractor on Thursday, so we'll discuss a couple of those issues that Jody brought up. There's a couple of things the county's got to do with sewer rings, like at the end of 22nd Street, they've got to add a ring to the sewer cap. And there, you know, some negligible spots we've got to look at. The work session for the code, you kind of give us direction to start on that. So we'll get started on a few of those changes and bring them back to you. The checks went out last Friday for all the pre-pays except four of them. And those were homes that were sold. So I've got the attorney looking into that. Who gets the money? The previous owner or the new homeowner? And we'll start the adjustments to the assessment. So the rest of the owners that paid in assessment will be getting the reduction. Except the council members. We shouldn't get that reduction. No, I'm just kidding. So the amortization schedule's got to be approved by the bank, but I think that's just a formality. And I know everyone's heard about the American Rescue Plan and this $600, I think it's $78,000 that Beller Beach is supposed to get. We're following that. We still haven't got any direct clarification of what it can be used for and what it can't be used for. We submitted, we've got all the information. The Florida League's been trying to keep us abreast. We've got all the information. Actually, today we submitted to the Florida League our gun's number, our tax ID, appoint person and stuff like that. So they keep talking May 15th, but we'll find out. And hopefully, May 15th, that'll give us more clarification because really the answers are all over the place. A lot of, as an example, the state, I think is getting like $23 billion. They plugged it into their budget. Well, what can we use it for? Can we use it for infrastructure? Can we use it for things which would help the city? So we'll find out as more detail comes, but I just want to give you an update. We've done our due diligence and we're in line for the cash if they're going to give it to us. I'll talk to the contractor, Wright. I don't have any, to my knowledge, there's no reservation for Beller Shore for the use of this building. So I will tell you that. In the past, I will tell you that any government agency that's asked to use our facility or vice versa, we give it to them complimentary. We've never charged another government agency for that. And I think that's everything. Someone has a question?
Will you address those? You don't have to do this now, but will you address the other comments that John Hensick and Debbie Mall had directly with them? If there's anything that you, I know.
Yeah, I'll talk to Wright and I'll see if I can get a copy of Debbie's synopsis. That way I can make sure I cover everything fine.
Frank and I, Dave, yes.
The dock on 7th Street, the removal? Are we going to remove the dock because the dock's in good shape? Can that be removed from its pilings and placed someplace or are we going to pen down the whole thing?
Well, the pilings are in bad shape and part of the dock's broke underneath, so we're just going to remove it. And we have some estimates and we're going to put an estimated number in the budget for next fiscal year to replace it. And at the same time, we'll start maybe a savings thing like we've done with other things in the city so we don't get hit so hard.
Probably a really dumb question. I don't, I'm not a proponent or opponent of stripes, but are there any plans on putting any kind of lines or anything on our streets? I don't, I don't know if it needs it, but it's not weird looking right now.
Well, it's because it's black, because it's new. The only place that there's a requirement is the bridge and we, we're going to let the asphalt cure a little bit before we do that because FDOT inspects that bridge and we have a bridge report and every time, every other year they come out with something and we've done some work we'll have to do on that bridge, but it's.
That's probably where it's.
Yeah, you had the curb lines and you had the center line on the bridge.
Okay. And also how did the island in the cul-de-sac reconstruction, how did that work out?
They've already broken. Piece out, but we'll get that taken care of. I think we can repatch it in. We're going to keep cones around for a little longer. They drove over the back.
Was it too soft?
Too fast. I mean, I mean, we had cones there and they drove over the cones. So usually concrete's usually about 28-day cure before it really gets hard. Of course, this didn't get 28 days of cure before they drove through the cones. They chipped a chunk out on the edge about, probably about that big. But it's done and hopefully it has some effect with the neighbors that were concerned about it.
All right, thank you.
I have something. Question, two questions actually. On this budget, I just happened to see the tennis courts. Did they go over budget?
No, it went under.
Okay. Because is the year-to-date actual, was actually out versus the budget or am I reading this wrong? Each two.
Oh, there is a, the $20,000 that was rolled over was not put in here. That's, so it's actually under.
All right. And then second, kind of going back to what Deborah Mall and Hensick were saying about the sheriff, at that Zoom call with the sheriff, I asked him to give us an estimate of what Beller Shore uses versus what we do so we can see. Still, it's never got back to us.
Well, I got some information back and I need to find out what numbers are right because I got something back from the sheriff. And currently, we get a credit of $35,000. And $35,093. And that's based on population and they're using the previous population, which sort of benefits us, but, but in any case. And then they did a study by calls for service. And they gave me 562 calls in the city of Beller Beach and 25 calls for service from Beller Shore. I need to, because Mrs. Mall told me something differently. They did tell me that, and this was verbally, that a lot of the calls that are made are from our residents, even though they're in Beller Shore. So they're, I guess they're calculating this. I guess if somebody's in the parking lot, somebody calls, you know? And if that happened, if they went by the calls for service, we'd only get a credit of $22,000. And if we look at the crime factor, and I don't know how they accumulated these percentages, but we'd only get a credit of $21,000. I will tell you that I would, you know, we'll talk to the sheriff some more because what Mrs. Mall said, I want to understand what these numbers are based on what she said. And then the other question, what if we say we want a full-time sheriff? Which means our current contract would go up $35,000 and it would only be devoted to us. And where this part-time sheriff for Beller Shore would go to could be picked up by one of the other cities or what have you. So that's, that's another option if we're concerned that we're spending. But you have to remember that all sheriffs go both places. As an example, if we get a call here, sheriff for Beller plus could come here as a backup. So, you know, it's, it's kind of how the system works. We're getting more police presence than one sheriff staff in a lot of cases.
I get that. I think it goes back to, well, if they get 45 minutes a day or whatever shift, but they're actually using two hours, then they need to pay for it.
Right. And we can tell the sheriff if that's what the council wants to do.
Well, that's what we need to figure out. Like what are they actually? I mean, if it's 50 minutes, they're paying 45. If they get 50 minutes, okay, you know? But if it's substantial, they're getting twice as much. So if they're getting like buy one, get one free essentially, that's, I'm not into that. They're getting 90 and we pay.
Yeah. And, and you know, the sheriff can come back and say, which he could, he can come back and say, we'll take them away from you and you'll have your contract as it is. I can't tell you if that's what he's going to say, but that's a possibility. And then our contract would automatically go up and that would separate us from Beller Shore completely.
And we're also not budgeted to go up that kind of increase, are we?
Pardon?
It's not in our budget to even go up that kind of an increase.
Well, no, we'd have to do that at the next budget cycle, which is October 1st because our current contract shows that in there.
But I want to think we need is options. If we stay how we are, if we stop the rate, if they pay their fair share of what they're using, we need to have like those three options and then we can make a.
Well, that's what.
And they do nothing, but we need to have options and get, it's all about just gathering information so we can at least appease the residents because I agree with them. It's annoying if we're paying the sheriff to fleece us with a baby's umbrella. And then I don't even think an umbrella or a hood on a chair is allowed because that's still a shade. So I mean.
Yeah. Like I said, I'm just giving you the information that was provided by the sheriff. So he calculated it in how we would pay. And he's willing to calculate it, you know, any way you want it. I mean, that's, that's what he's basically told me. So he's saying if you want to calculate it by calls, then this is how, you know, they'll have to provide something that says how many calls are made by Beller Shore and how many calls are made by Beller Beach. Which according to this, he told me it was, it came from their fiscal bureau and he said there were 562 calls by Beller Shore and 25, or no, 562 by Beller Beach and 25 by Beller Shore.
But you also have to take any consideration when they're patrolling the beach and spending seven, 10 minutes telling a citizen to take down their baby's umbrella, even though nobody called on that, that's still part of the time. So I mean, I think those numbers are not a fair representation of what's actually happening if you take all of the aspects in. And that's what I want to know is how much of that 45 minutes is being used on umbrellas or how much of it is being used for Beller Shore's interests versus ours? Or how much more do they get?
Well, I'll ask him further and ask him, you know.
Including the beach patrols that aren't necessarily from a call? Because they're supposed to be patrolling the beaches every once in a while? Is that my understanding? Or do they all go out there when someone complains?
I think they have a directed patrol maybe once a shift or something. I mean, we don't have any, I don't assign a directed patrol for our beach unless I have an incident like somebody calls and says, hey, we've got dogs on the beach at 7:30, 8:00 in the morning. So I will ask the sheriff to do a directed patrol of the beach for that for, you know, a week or two, just to see if there, it is actually happening on a daily basis. Because, because I do hear, you know, various people that happens every morning at 7:30 or.
I've seen Beller Shore residents watch their dog on the beach. I mean.
Right. But you have to be very careful with dogs walking on the beach because there's only a couple of questions that a deputy can ask them when it comes to, if Johnny says it's a service animal, you can't ask him to produce anything that says it is. So that's, that's part of the law. You know, they can't, it's kind of like the bicycles, electric. Bicycles are electric. Our ordinance says we have.
Beller Shore resident with their dog hanging out at the beach. Sorry.
Well, like I said, that's, that's, you know, law enforcement has to ask those questions, but there's only a couple they can answer. And I don't know if Sheriff Sargent, which, could I ask him? He can tell you.
We have time. Come on up.
What do you think you get? There are many questions that we can ask out there. I'm not going to try to regurgitate what it is right now because I have to go out and look at the specifics of it. But he is correct, there are two questions when it comes because of ADA regulations. So when we go out there, they don't have to produce, we can't ask them to produce any type of identification that the dog is a service animal. So we can ask them, I believe, what it is, don't quote me on this, is what specific function does the dog perform? And they tell us what it is and we have no way of knowing anything other than that. So again, we are, we are limited on what we can ask out there when it comes to service to dogs on the beach and that applies to all the cities.
Do you find that you're spending a lot of time trolling the beach for shade ordinance purposes?
Well, you're asking the wrong sergeant on that because I work with the evenings. I drive 65, so I don't know.
For the answer, no for you.
I don't know what day shift those out there.
Is there any way you can find out? Is that information that we can formulate as far as like, like he spent seven minutes, 10 minutes, 12 minutes during the day on a Saturday or whenever saying, take your baby's umbrella off the beach or?
I have no idea how they definitely gave that time that's out there. I did hear obviously discussion about deputies doing their beach patrols and there are direct patrols that deputies do have a lot of responsibility shift. However, what I will say, a deputy on my shift, he will start a specific rotation. I don't know where that is. And he will patrol from the northern, northern of the city all the way down to the south. So that also would include Beller Beach. He doesn't just specifically patrol Beller Shore.
Of course. Okay.
Are you saying that it's a service animal? It doesn't have to have any mark, like a S, pink or white, it says that this dog is a service animal?
All I can tell you is what we are as law enforcement are limited on the questions we can ask. We have not been told that they have to have any type of identification that identifies them as a service animal. We can only ask two questions.
So if the person that has the dog on there, and I love dogs. I'm one of the biggest dog lovers. I'm a volunteer at Dallas County Animal Shelter. I never brought my dog to the beach and I see these dogs on the beach with a 16-foot lead. You can't see that being a service animal. animal. I see them with no leash.
Okay. Then we can get into other regulations, I guess, when it comes to niches. And in that sense, but we're talking about dogs on the beach, and they say it's a service animal, we can only ask certain questions, specific questions that can go outside of that.
So, you can't cite them and they don't have the next step that you can produce that this dog is a service animal?
Well, I'm sure there are law enforcement officers out there that will cite, and then I guess you can go around with case law and everything like that, but common sense, hopefully we'll rule that and then go based on what you're required to do.
Because I'm afraid of the beach, I only really see the sheriff patrol the beach against it. So, I've been a long time today, I see no patrol. So, I also spend much time and spend with Bel Air Shore as far as, like, Thursday and Friday. Sorry, man.
I have a question. Just curious, because of our relationship with Bel Air Shore and contracts and the relationship we have as far as police, where it goes, do you think that there's ever been a time where you were unable to fulfill your obligation to the city of Bel Air Beach because of Bel Air Shore?
No.
If, if we were to separate the contract and we were to pay more and still contract with Pinellas County, would our level of service increase at all?
I think that's outside my scope to answer that question. All I know is that as law enforcement officer, I come, I try to provide as much law service as I can. As a supervisor, I reach out outside, as was discussed earlier, I would reach out, I would respond if necessary as to how, or if they're busy, I would be one to respond, new county corporal, other deputies around the area. I really don't want to respond to that question, because it's outside.
That's fine. Lastly, if, if the sheriff's department was unable to fulfill their obligation because of lack of manpower, would they call in someone else to help?
I would think that that's, that would be nearly a disaster for that to happen, because the resources available to us are plenty. We will call deputies from wherever we have to come and assist, whether that be from North County, whether that be from over the county's park area, I can't see something like that happening.
Thank you very much. Wyngton?
A couple of questions. You know, you made a statement about how you're a patrol, I mean, you pull patrol from the north end to the south end, and I've got, you know, you kind of painted a picture in my mind, it all kind of blurs together, doesn't it? I mean, it's, you're patrolling an area, but I mean, you don't see the demarcation between Bel Air Shore, Bel Air Beach, you're just in the beach area kind of, aren't you?
I myself don't go out there, but I'm assuming my deputies do, they draw a line in the sand that says that we're going to stop at 19th Street and we're going to turn around and come back south to the beach.
So, administratively, I know you guys keep logs at each shift, you gotta fill out the paperwork and stuff, is that all detailed enough to break down whether or not, hey, I did a house check for Bel Air Shore or I did a house check for Bel Air Beach? I mean, are the logs detailed enough that somebody could go back and audit them and say, "Okay, well, actually, you spent this much time working Bel Air Shore versus Bel Air Beach"? Are the logs detailed enough for that?
Well, there are detailed logs for specific events. So, in other words, driving the beach and asking somebody to remove the shade structure as they're driving along the beach, there should be a log of that if they're pulling a number for the ordinance violation itself. However, if it's not recording, it has to please take down the structure and then they continue driving. House checks, directed patrols, those will be logged.
I know those are official, probably department documents. Do we have visibility on your logs or at the end of the shift? Do we get a copy of it and stuff so we, no?
Point of information, Councilman. I've witnessed one week, again, the sheriff goes as far as 28th Street, Indian Rocks Beach, makes a U-turn, comes back. So, and then there's another sheriff that patrols up in IRB, you know, up to 28th Street, turns around. I can't see how far down they go, they keep going into Bel Air Beach, but I know at 28th Street they do make a U-turn.
Okay. That would be clarification, so yes, we have deputies that patrol the city of Indian Rocks Beach, obviously deputies that patrol Bel Air Beach and Bel Air Shore, so that deputy will not go into Clearwater as a matter of routine, nor would that deputy go down to Indian Rocks Beach or vice versa as a matter of routine.
No, no, I understand that clarification, I understand that. Thanks.
Council, do we have any other questions from the sheriff? We're on the city manager. Sheriff, thank you for helping clarify things and getting us information. Back to you.
That's it.
Okay, that's it. We now move to the city clerk. And before we move to the city clerk, I just, what we read before, you get a chance to read it, but we did a proclamation, and it's the 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week from May 2nd through May 8th, and it's really to honor all the work that professional clerks do for all the cities, and of course, we're honoring county gentry, that's part of that. So, I'll be the first to say thank you for everything that you do for the city and your wonderful job, and we'd like to have you. So, congratulations on this. And the mayor's council has invited all the clerks to join us for lunch on Wednesday, so hopefully you can make that, because they want to, first time they've ever done it, to honor all the clerks for all their work, so hopefully you can join us for that. But let me say thanks first, then I'll turn it over to you and I'm sure the rest of the council will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, no, I have no other comment.
Council?
I would like to thank Patty for all the help, all the assistance she's provided over the last two years. Honestly, I think our hands would be tied without you. You are invaluable to this city, and we greatly appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much.
Council?
I'll share a time here.
Guys, I really appreciate all the help you give us. I'm proud of you as a candidate and a county council, I know I've heard you throughout, I've been on my emails, I just want to thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Come on in. All right, go ahead.
Patty, I just want to say, you know, you're absolutely amazing and we adore you and you do so much for everybody, so you know how I feel about you. Thank you.
I'm gonna go, Robin, Leslie and Glenn, because I know everybody wants to speak. Robin, go ahead.
Patty, we know we love you, you're awesome. I couldn't have done this without you. I love how you always know all the answers for my questions and you always have a smile on your face. It's always such a joy to see you, because you're always happy and smiling. So, thank you for everything you do, we really appreciate you.
Leslie?
Just echo the same comments that everybody who's made, Patty, we're so lucky to have you, thank you for everything you do and the always smile on your face.
Thank you.
Glenn?
Give up the great work.
Thank you very much.
Lynn Reeves and Fred Riley, if you wish.
Yeah, Patty keeps me straight most of the time now. We're trying to keep each other straight. But one thing I did forget to mention, Patty does a lot of work in, she put out your latest edition of the City News, and that's a new thing she's doing. So, you know, she's adding to her repertoire along with the website. And we did forget to mention Patty's going to be on vacation the last two weeks of May. So, if we have any meetings, I guess I'm your city clerk.
We're not, we're not going to make a big proclamation.
I was going to say, there goes the city.
Well, I'll just basically say the same thing everyone else did. As many times as I've worked with her, she's exceptionally pleasant, and she does one thing that I very much appreciate, every time the orientation is, "How do you solve a problem?" And that is absolutely vital for the city clerk, and I'm very appreciative of, appreciative of you. Well, thank you.
Thanks again, Patty. Citizens, anything? We know how you feel, but go ahead. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah.
Mark, you gotta, you know what, just so they could hear, you gotta have to come up.
Will do.
Lynn, when we redo this, we should have the microphone that, like, he shouldn't have to come up, you know, there should be someone out there. Just a thought. Go ahead.
Marco, 22nd Street. I've known Patty for a long time now, and in my business life, I've employed a lot of folks, but I've never been honored to have an employee that does as much for folks with a smile on her face as Patty does. Not only is she intelligent about any question and can answer anything asked her, nothing seems to be beyond her scope, and she has those answers. Your emails are returned, your phone calls are taken. I think we're just, as a city, we're blessed to have her, and I hope you are here for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? John Hensick?
I echo what everybody else has said. I've only been a resident for about five or six years, and I've been involved in just a few things with the city and so forth, but it's like every time I can either come into the building or I've emailed Patty, she's always had the right answer, always in a timely fashion, and I really had a surprise a day or so ago. She sends me an email on Clear Blue Sky as a reminder of tonight's meeting. I have it, even though I do periodically get CRS, I do know that the first Monday of the month of us, it's a federal holiday, we're heading for the meeting, and she also had the graciousness to include the agenda package. So, I had an opportunity to prove it. Patty, outstanding, you rock, lady.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Patty, again. All right, we go to city council comments. This month, we begin with Rita Swob.
I don't have any other comments to make.
Leslie Natera?
No comments.
Glenn Gunn?
Couple of quick ones. Congratulations to the newly selected members of the advisory committee, we're looking forward to great, great things from you. Interesting that the mayor brought up the podium back there, because as a best practice, typically, a lot of, and back us up on this, Victor, I mean, you see all the different council chambers, typically, the podium is back there by the citizens, does that make sense? And along with that, I'm looking at all these wires here, and maybe it's time to join the 1990s here and go Bluetooth on some of this stuff and looking at wireless, and that might, it's probably there, because that's where the connections are through the wires and stuff. Just a show of hands in the back house, the sound quality is an improvement? Okay. So, that did work out well. One last issue is, just a recommendation, best practices possibly taken under advisement for future sessions is, we call on the city attorney to sum up his comments or whatever, and it's the only chance for us to get some visibility as to future actions. So, what I would recommend or ask as a best practice for future sessions is just a summary of action items that you're possibly taking away from the meeting. You know, I've got a consensus here, these are the action items I'm taking for future work and billable orders more than anything. So, it just takes a, takes 30 seconds, 60 seconds to say, "I've got this reaction, I've got this reaction, I've got this reaction," and these are the deadlines and the deliverables that I expect to give you, and this is the deadline for it. Don't ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Becker?
Yes. Last week, though, I received an email from the city manager about, he's a citizen, just a visitor, about some beach problems, navigation orders. It's been one of my concerns, it's been a concern of a few of my neighbors, from 1st Street, Bel Air Shores to 16th Street, buoys were removed, I went to the city manager, says there's really no requirements that you have to have removed. So, I looked into it a little bit farther, I went to the county commissioners, back in 2002, there was a permit issued, 33 boats, and they're not just buoys, I mean, we have a coastal guard man here that can probably tell you more than I know about buoys, but these are safety, and they have idle speed, no weight on them and everything like that. Somewhere, somehow, they were removed up to 16th Street. And the boats come in at a high rate of speed, it's dangerous. I don't want to get into litigation that the town, that the city's facing right now on someone that's looking foul. This is a hazard, a litigation problem, looking right at us in the face. And now that this person that used the city email and went out to everybody, public record. So, the regional permit in 2002, it's issued by the Florida Fish and Wildlife, not the Observatory Commission. I spoke to them today, they're not sure if there was ever a rescinding of that permit, they're looking into that, they're going to get back and give it up. But it clearly says it's a safety issue. Now, I can't see 18 years later, with more people coming in this area, that we can reduce safety. So, I really think we should look at this, because it's a permit that was issued, it was a joint permit, Bel Air Shores and Bel Air Beach, 33 buoys. Right now, there's about 17 buoys and only one in Bel Air Shore. So, I think we should look into that, and I think it should address, if somebody gets seriously hurt.
Frank, is it possible, maybe, do you get, could you get that to Patty, maybe, and get the copy of that out to us, that, what you're finding there?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Send it to her.
Be right, she'll distribute it. Yes?
I can kind of speak to that. Back at that time, just so the council knows, yes, the cities at that time went together and bought the buoys, Bel Air Shore paid for the installation of theirs, and over time, no one really tore them out, they'd just break away and go somewhere else and pick them up later. And they've opted not to put them back. We actually just replaced a bunch of our buoys in the last 12 months, because the permit is there, so periodically, we go around and add buoys, you know, because they break away and disappear, and so...
And the permit speaks that they're breaking away and disappearing, damage run over, which they need to be able to replace. And that's my question, they haven't been replaced since, what's that, four years now?
Well, some of those buoys have been gone longer than that, I can tell you.
Well, I really, I mean, it's 33, they have a longitude, latitude, that they have to be spread a little bit more, and I think we can go and get a variance and say, hey, we're on 12th Street, we're on 6th Street, we're on 9th Street, just to keep the boats out. Because if you ever go on the beach at 6th Street or 12th Street, you can watch, you can make a, at 12th Street, they'll make a left-hand turn, they'll come flying in, 28th Street will make a right-hand turn, they'll come flying in. And I've had them come right up, I've got pictures I can show you, I mean, and I've got pictures sent to me, and it's, it's a mess, and it's just, especially with the waters, they come in at a high rate of speed. And it's not in Bel Air Beach, it's not in Indian Rocks Beach, it's just between those 16 lines.
So, am I hearing you want us to check about putting buoys at those three locations?
Well, I don't know if you can, you have the idea, just get a variance first, see if we can do longitude, latitude, just three locations, because the boat, they cause them to do locations.
Well, no, the buoy companies, we just give them what's on the permit and they go put them in.
Well, if the current permit is enforced, there's 33 buoys that have to be replaced, and if not, there's only 17 left.
Right. That's the ones in Bel Air Shore. Bel Air Beach has, Bel Air Beach has their buoys.
But isn't that their jurisdiction, Bel Air Shore?
Yes, it is.
So, we don't have much to say, right?
No, it's a joint permit.
It was a joint permit, I do know of it.
But if they're electing not to replace, do we, I guess we have to look at it, but if, then, even though we haven't taken the permit jointly, if they're saying, hey, we don't want to do this, I don't know if we have any right to tell them, yes, you have to. Probably don't.
All right, guys.
Permit says, they must.
And they have to be replaced.
Okay. Then, yeah, let's get this out and let's all take a look at it, including the confident Fred Riley.
I was just saying that the permit is...
Saying that the permit is lifetime?
Yeah, for the most part, the permits for buoys, you establish a map and you pick the spots you want, and then you submit that to the Florida Fish and Wildlife, and they give you approval for the permit. If you add buoys, you have to update it, but for the most part, they're lifetime. I don't know that there's any requirement that, and, you know, I'll have to go back and look at the permit, I haven't looked at it recently, but I don't know that there's any requirement that you have to put them back. But we do it, because we have an ordinance that says 100 yards from the shoreline, it's a safety zone, and we can't do that. Same at the intercoastal, we do them there too, so...
And so does Bel Air Shores, has the same, just about the same words, language in there, "It's 100 yards from the shoreline", and as the Fish and Wildlife says, "Well, without a buoy, how do you..."
Right.
"...control it?" And you talk to the sheriff's department, you say, "Yeah, it does look like it's within 100 feet, but how do you determine how, if there's nothing there, I'm warned, or get out?" Well, we'll get some more clarification.
Okay, let's follow up on this one, this is, I mean, let's at least look into it and see where we're at for safety. Anything else, Frank? Okay, thank you. Robin?
No comments.
Dave Gaddis?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm also good. So, your next, you don't have on the scheduled meeting, do we have a work session that we're planning for this month? At this point, it's open?
It's open. That's why I made the comment that he's gonna be on vacation.
Right, so, to be determined, probably not gonna happen, most likely, okay? We do have a park and rec board meeting on May 12th, Wednesday, May 12th, at 3:00 PM here. So, that's it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
What's a tie, 3:00 PM? Well, Frank Baker, Rita Swob, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're adjourned, good night, everyone, thanks for coming.